All right. Meeting's been called to order. Has everyone had a chance to read the previous minutes?
Yes.
Will she accept the previous minutes?
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Reports and warrants. Terry has the warrants in her hands. Audrey has presented the financial report, balances, bare funds. Any comments? Any discussion on that?
Is that this here?
Yeah.
So it's in the new format?
Yep. I specifically requested that she give something that was straightforward and easier to read. Okay, and I think this meets that. There's a 10 loan, which two states that we've used, 84,000, we have 114 eight left on the note. General fund balances, zoning, planning, town hall repair, Bakersfield, grand list, gravel pit. Fireworks, Chris has been sitting idle for two years. This is the PA system.
So was the road account that we were looking last week, was that? Where is that?
That was what was in the checking account itself. It was not what was due to the repair fund. And I mean, the rest of it was still in the 10 loan, but that was what was actually physically in the checking account at the time.
So there was funds still?
Yes.
Yeah.
What are you doing?
She's half a voice.
It's not on there? You say you don't see it?
No, I was wondering about that. 2,800 months, one month, so I see it on the other side. So far, I'm finding it a lot easier to follow.
Yeah. We'll see, we're lucky enough for her to get the tax bills out.
Tax bills are all out. The only significant raises that I could see came from the school district side. What?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I haven't been to it earlier, that's for sure.
I think you know my opinion on that one, so. Less said, the better right now. Remember, I'm representing Josh tonight.
Now's the time to talk.
I I agree. It's a lot better. She's been here, she said, since seven o'clock this morning and was tired, and she said, I'm going home.
That's what I wanted to say, too.
I can't say that I was real pleased to see you come through the door. Don't take that personally.
You have somebody hired, you just gotta get him started.
Is everyone satisfied with this?
Matt, what did you already break on the mower?
Just rivet some teeth for replacement parts.
Yeah, those are, those are what you call expendables. It wouldn't work. I mean, it's not necessary.
So moved to, except to new accounting by the treasurer?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Don't move. Select Board is pleased with the new accounting sheets. And I suggested to her that not to try doing half-month balances, so that we will get these, the first meeting of every month, and it will be on all the completed transactions from the month before. What was happening before is we asked her to come to both meetings, and she was trying to do, or give us a report of a half-month's balance, which is, I'm sorry, it's pretty next to impossible. So I asked her to do just at the first meeting of every month, do the completed transactions from last one. I think she's done a good job with that. So zoning administrator position. Is that what Mr. Holbert's here for today? No.
We have a letter from our zoning administrator. She is resigning the position, and I have talked to her, and I had, her last day is August 14th. And she's agreed to help with the transition period for whoever steps into the job. And she also wants to continue to serve on the zoning board of adjustment, which is great. And in conversation with her, I said I would do this on an interim basis. I have since revised that to want to apply to that position on a regular basis, as my work is not materialized, and I wouldn't mind learning that inside and out. I have attended several zoning board of adjustment meetings, and I'm beginning to understand the process, and there's a book out there that has all the details in it.
Yes, there is.
And also Melanie brought me through a little bit of the priorities that are in front of us right now, as far as what she was working on, and what's been resolved since she took the position. So I feel comfortable that there's a flow of work that she's started and will be able to hand off cleanly.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
I'm not up on the conflict of interest with other jobs, the select board can
I'll look into that tomorrow, and specifically within Did we advertise it before?
No.
Yes, we did.
We did, but you can appoint us on.
No, I know we can appoint, but I think it's only fair to let people know the position's there.
How many people did we get applied, get applied for? Yeah. I mean, we have advertised.
We definitely should, I think.
Advertise it again, then, please.
Okay, I can put it in the paper, or we can advertise it on V L C T free for 60 days.
But nobody's gonna look on there from town.
The qualified people will be looking there at V L C T. I agree.
Is it a requirement?
Be town resident. I don't think that's, I don't think so.
All elected officials have to be town residents, but elected officials do not.
Actually, then go back to, because of the timeframe, I would go back to
And we also put it on the Baker's, the Facebook page, too. I think it was on there, too. Yeah, that's great. The only one we'd have to pay for is the courier.
If we can do it for free in the V L C T advertising section, please do it there as well.
Yep.
Saying that I will help an interim position and also apply for that position as well, so there is some continuity, and besides if you want to learn the job, we'll look into the conflict of interest and see where that goes.
I don't recall that as being one of them, but we should check.
So you're gonna do it from
Yeah, I'll actually be in Saturday for my first training.
Well, I think that has to be voted on, though.
Would it fall back on us anyway?
On all of us, yeah.
Zoning board administrator is not in a elected position.
We are the board.
Correct. So you're still, you're still on the hook?
I'm happy to share.
As I told you earlier.
To make a motion for it, Lance, is what I'm saying. Right.
Oh, yeah, but the chair doesn't make motions.
No, I know, but I'm saying there needs to be a motion for that, and then there also needs to be a motion if you're gonna have just Brenda doing it versus a whole board.
Yes.
See what I'm saying?
Is anybody gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept her letter of resignation.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So move.
The other portion, we're gonna have to wait until the others are here, so I say we table it till the next meeting.
Yes, because obviously
That's right.
So we will table the decision to have Brenda do the, as an interim job.
She's still going to train and whatnot with what's her name, but
Well, it's not a bad idea.
I would just wait on the motion piece.
It's not a bad idea. Yep.
Right. Right.
We do not need a motion for that. Go ahead and take the course. It's a good idea for you to have a working knowledge, because in the history of the town, there have been several periods where we have been minus a zoning board administrator, and somebody with knowledge of how to handle it is very handy.
Okay, so I'm going to send something to the county courier for a week.
Sure.
Two weeks.
Your opinion, please?
Sorry, I was reading.
Sorry, how long?
I would do two weeks. So you'd have to
But if somebody wants to do Facebook and Facebook
Well, I'm putting in any of the free places where we can put it.
Facebook and Facebook forum, that's gonna have to be somebody who's more technology savvy than that, social media stuff.
Freightway executive, do we send it to the leading cities and towns?
Yeah.
Send me the paragraph, which you said, leading cities and towns, I'll just all available free venue.
Thank you. Anything further on the zoning board administrator? Kirby? We already discussed it, but that was, that we weren't The select board is aware that it is the town's responsibility to maintain the curbing and the sidewalks that are being installed and have been installed several years ago. That is a condition of the states.
So
So wait a minute.
If the curbing is too high and functionally hazardous, can that curbing be taken out or reduced in height?
No. That, they, there have been at least four informational meetings that the town, that the town, yes, they have, that the town has all been invited to.
Yes.
Okay.
And I had talked to Bruce Martin personally, when it was still on paper, talking about the height of those curbing, and in flight, talking to that post, he was not wavering, one was happy, happy. And then I said, there's nothing in that curbing that's ADA compliant for access to my house.
It looked like they had a lowered area in front of you.
They did, after I brought it there, and he came back, and then he said he was trying to match the curbing on the opposite side of the road.
Well, you can't get a wheel, I agree, you can't, if you're looking for wheelchair access, you couldn't get a wheelchair over there.
No, and he said, I'm trying to match the curbing across the road, that's the difference, is there's no house across the road.
Fair point.
Yeah. So they think, he wasn't gonna put it in front of that little library, and I said, you're gonna have somebody that's walking with a cane, or a walker, from all that distance down to the sidewalk? And then he moved it to the middle, the door that goes in the hall.
But back to my point, there were several informational meetings where this technically should have been brought up in those meetings. Compliance, ADA compliance. I missed that one myself. I'm not gonna make any excuses, I didn't catch that one.
The other thing that's gonna have to change is, he insisted that the wheel locks be at the edge of the road. My goal was to get that position there, also have postal service, that the mail carrier would have to go when they were that close to the earth, and she and I talked to Jared, did you, about this?
Yep.
He said, wait until it's done, assuming you move the frame. I think the problem to address it would be
It's a state issue.
The state should kind of point me for the postal service, I would think.
I would think that they, the state would be aware of postal regulations.
It's a state issue, but the state's telling us that we have to take care of it?
No, 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 not that part. We have to maintain the sidewalk and curb. That's it.
So not her parking lot in front of her house?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, we have to plow that.
Because that is not my personal parking area.
Oh, so it would be, it could be
It is in the state highway.
Yes.
So anyone can use it?
Yes.
One of those nice little four-wheeler boys. That's right.
Yeah.
So we knew all that curbing was gonna be put in like that?
Right from the very get-go.
Who was on the board, then? Who?
Brian.
Brian, I believe, remember, meeting that I was at, we're asking, and family members.
It's the same agreement.
Wanted sidewalks, who would be responsible for cleaning, and Brian said it would be the homeowner. And then it was brought up, if somebody fell and got hurt on the sidewalk, whose insurance covers that injury? And Brian said it would be the homeowners. So a lot of the homeowners, I said, they don't want a sidewalk.
Yeah, that was the agreement with the first section of sidewalk.
Well, I think they've made it very dangerous for the postal, post office over there. There's hardly any parking as it is, and I'm telling you, Saturday, it was a nightmare going in and out of there. I don't know whose brainiac idea that was, but that is a mess. I don't even know how some of those people are gonna drive away.
And we had, we had an opportunity to talk, you know, when Eric Furz was going around, and talking to Ben, and he brought Bruce Martin in, and talking to him. And they were told before, you know, any dirt moves, that this isn't gonna work. They did some adjustments, but not many.
Is that why you're here, Jerry? Is this why you're here too, as well, the curbing?
Absolutely.
Let's hear your opinion.
Okay, I, I, I went to at least one of the meetings. Very early on, and we were talking about, they're, they're in a great plan, and I raised the issue of what do you owe for right-of-way limits? You know everything down the road, and they also showed him that, the road going up Egypt Road, past the house, being a three-rod right-of-way, remember, I think those records are down in County Clerk's Office. I believe that's a two-rod right-of-way, because I've had a long running discussion, because they showed their right-of-way going through the corner of the house, and I had a young fellow from Munson House telling me that he'd go right through the corner of my house, and there's nothing I can do about it.
He's still alive?
Well, sure he is, sure he is, but he was asked for it, not a part. But in any case, I mean, in any case, these are, these are some of the issues here that, that go, and, you know, a little bit like Linda, I felt like I was talking about.
Dealing with the state, and I have dealt with the state through my former job for 30 years, is a lot like that.
My concern is that it's not up to us to tell the state how to do their job. They, they have those, they have licensed engineers, they have people that handle it. They're to make sure that it meets all of the design requirements in the state. And for Linda to be I guess word of caution, but trying to dress down a little bit, because, you know, it's, it's not ADA, and, yeah, we did that, and we did talk to them, but I think they need to have done that. I personally think it's gonna be interesting to sit down here at midnight, and a pot truck comes down, it's gonna sound like Mongo Pomp. Da boom, da bang, da boom, da bang, and where do we put the, put that smoke, and who is responsible for hauling that smoke out of there? We used to bank it, you know? Now, you don't have that option anymore. For the most part, I think
I need to put you on hold for just a second. And with all due respect about the comment, talking to a post, right now, nobody who is here can hear you, and we're live meetings, so if you wouldn't mind coming up and sitting where, in the proximity of the microphone, so you could be heard and recorded, and other people will be able to listen to your words, and it will be in a place where we can go back and see it and review it.
That's, that's not gonna happen. I'm sitting, I'm sitting where I sit, at a meeting, and I meet all the requirements for a town meeting.
Understood.
If you have technology problems, it's your problem. In any case, I'm addressing the select board, and the select board, do you have a problem here?
No.
Select board does not have a problem here, you two.
Okay, so back to where I was before. These are costs that seem to get dumped up down. They will spend their state and federal money, and when they walk away, we're left with, with an increased budget. I would ask, can't change your agreements, but I would ask the selectmen to maintain a separate ledger of what they expend maintaining the roads because of the curbing and the sidewalks and things of that, and that should be easy enough for Matt and Mark. Mark probably will be doing most of the side blocks and, and the parking areas.
Those are also part of the responsibility of the town.
He's gonna be on an uphill battle.
He already does that.
Mark's gonna be on an uphill battle. Where do you think that snow's gonna go? Yeah, the sidewalk.
Yeah. It all depends, well, I made a comment
He's not gonna be out there till three in the morning.
Before we're on the record about how my mother felt about it, and she felt basically that it was too dressed up for a one-horse town. I can see your point.
There should be a timeline, because the kids
I can also say that it looks nice, but as you say, Jerry, I don't know what it's gonna cost us, yeah. This was, the original sidewalk was an agreement before I was here. This discussion started God, it must be 12 years ago, Matt? About 15 years ago, when I was a freshman select board member, and I listened to my senior select board members say, yeah, 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 and I couldn't disagree with anything they had to say at the time. I'll stop at that.
I'll give you one more point. It's on this stormwater drain. When they were designing that, and Bruce Martin come, you know, to my house, and this was about two years ago, this was before COVID. And he had come, and I said, so you're putting, how many drains down on the other side of my driveway? And he said, well, there'll be that one over there, which is running from the sullens or on the town road, the one over here, the one across the road from my house, plus the one that was by the pole, they filled up the concrete. So I said, you're putting all that extra water So I said, you're putting all that extra water down into this ditch? Have you gone down and talked to the Lupuses? What's that gonna do? Because they're culvert, and it gives them a downpour. Because I don't know if you remember back when we had a storm that put water into, I think it was Dennis Ockett that lived.
Yes, where Bryce's live.
Yeah.
Put it right into your first floor.
Mm-hmm.
And his answer was, that's not in my territory. Not my responsibility, not my territory.
I have no response, I, I.
I call Lisa Lucas, and I said, we need to contact, please. I don't know what her success was.
Now that's, which place is that? That's heading down.
The second one.
Thirty-six.
Well, the first one on thirty-six.
First one on the left, huh?
The state cop.
Oh, the first one on the right, the state cop, okay. All right. They didn't improve that culvert at all. Thirty-six is also a state road.
I'm not, I'm not a civil engineer, but I think they're responsible.
I would agree with you, uh, morally, but I don't know about legally.
Maybe.
Chief, be my accomplice.
Well, maybe, maybe we should have the, the state engineer in charge, engineer of record on this project, come and sit down with us and answer some of these questions. And, and yes, we raised issues at, uh, meetings that you had. We don't think, uh, uh, they, they really listen to us. They have, they have a plan in mind, and, and uh, they planned their work and how they're working their plan. But at the end of the day, uh, there's a few things. Have, have they estimated the cost of meetings? And provided you as a selectman, a, a estimate that says, we believe, based on average snowfall and cleanup times and stuff like that, here's the cost to maintain this improvement. Because generally, an improvement has two parts to it. It's the, it's the capital cost of building it, and it's the cost of maintaining it and operating.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're very good at the capital cost, because that's what they do. Uh, but I also think they need to provide us with, what's that maintenance cost? Because if it comes up to be a hundred thousand a year, well, but, we don't know where it is, that's why I say.
Unless they get a bigger plow and you start ripping out curbing, they're, oh, that might be an answer.
Or maybe the state trucks, if they, they, they whack off on it, boom, bang, boom, bang, they'll, uh, take care of it anyways.
You look and see what they did on the southwest corner out there, they bumped that curbing out into the road. As it was, there was a problem with when you're coming up thirty-six, getting visibility south when there was a snowplow hole. Now they moved that snowplow out into the road more.
But, yeah, that's always been a bad one there, but it gets a lot of snow.
It's gonna be worse. They did a great job of protecting the hillside holes. Yeah, no, it's gonna stand out in one of the new wagon, huh? Or the snowplow, or the pit trucks. Yeah. I don't know how some of those people are gonna plow the driveway here.
They've barely left them room for a plow to get to the end, through the end of the driveway.
Well.
I know.
I was noticing that. Ooh, they've got a lot of.
It's not as bad as it looks. I've had it for five, six years. It's not that bad.
This looks narrow.
Yeah, there's a couple down that way that look very narrow.
I see a lot of split chambers coming out.
People are gonna fix their own, is what's gonna happen.
Uh, there've already been threats to that, yes.
Yeah.
We'll just wait till they move out of town and we'll take care of it.
That's the thought of the minutes?
No, probably. Everybody else is already very, anyway.
I agree with Jerry. I think they should be coming and talking to us, because there are a lot of unhappy people.
I was quite frustrated.
Because we'll be in an informational meeting.
I will tell you this, there were five or six state people here. They had all their charts and their displays, and they had a map that was, uh, was on these posts, it was close to twenty feet long, it's out there if you care to look at it. And I was the only person from the town of Bakersfield here. I was extremely frustrated.
You didn't have Facebook, did you?
Back then? That's a recent addition for me.
It is a good way to advertise, though.
This, that was the state's responsibility to advertise it. They did put it in the carrier, they put it in, uh.
Rather than time target?
Touche. They probably did.
Yeah.
You're, you're probably correct.
I only know about this because, and shared this with me. I took my, I looked at my email, which probably once a week, and, who there was. So, uh, but I, I, I have come and I've asked questions, and I don't believe I've gotten, uh, other than the dog and pony show answers, and, uh, the maps and the stuff like that, as engineers call it, dog and pony show. We're, we're here to just inundate you with stuff.
More information than I could deal with on myself, I can tell you that.
That's probably true. But in any case, uh, at this point in time, you're gonna wind up with two things. Folks are gonna deal with it themselves, as they have in the past, or the state can come in here and explain a good reason why it needs to be the way it is, and no other. And that needs to be the engineer records, that's the signs, drawings.
How did they deal with the, uh, Northwest Solid Waste District? They were very.
Left them a forty foot curb pad.
Instead of twenty?
I believe so.
So they doubled their curb pad?
I don't know if they, they didn't make it any bigger after the.
I'd have to look, I'd have to look at the map to see what was originally planned on, but they were upset with what they were elected as well. But you're not the only ones complaining.
And, and the other part that's a little concerning to me is, they paved up Egypt Road a little ways, and I've gone down that for decades, back when it was a goat path, I went down there. And, uh, my concern is that, uh, it's gonna glass up pretty quick. It glasses up as dirt, and now, now we don't have a, a rough ditch to, you can grind up some gravel and, and, uh, it's gonna be a dog and ride in the middle of the road.
I personally don't think I'm gonna choose to go down that direction after a snowstorm.
There've been going to any, excuse me, Alan, I hope, uh, any ditches along there where little maple probably free to take it down, because, because when they get a hard rain, that's gonna, that's gonna fill up that edge base.
Well, it's gonna gravel it in.
Yeah, gravel right down in there. I can't see, uh, I do a lot of, they're, let's say, put some ditches on both sides.
Before there was a catch case in there, kept plugging up the culvert, it was there.
Yeah, and then out on the road.
Yeah.
But wouldn't the Egypt Road be us? Cause he's talking.
They've gone outside there right away and paved further up the road than, they paved outside there right away. Uh, which is not necessarily bad, but under those conditions, under the right conditions, it can be better.
He does solve that in the morning, though, when he does the block top.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't always stay that way, but when he does the post road, he comes back and he hits the bottom of that hill and he's having it.
He's gonna have to keep watch of it now.
Uh-huh. And you're gonna grab a watch, it's supposed to be going down, it's up all the way to the top.
Uh, yeah.
Because other than that, you can't really put a ditch on that either side. You got ledge on one side, you can't blast out, and you got trees on the other side that make sure you're not gonna cut.
And you still got that culvert up there that's plugged all the length of it too. It's just about at the end of the bay, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a two rod right away, I figure. They don't have a lot of food to move, even if you wanted to. No.
Any further comments?
So, we talked to anybody from the fire station? About their cut off of access?
No. Fire station has a dealing with them on a different level as well, because they've, uh, allowed uh, Jay Hutchins to utilize their property. Uh, I'm not sure what their deal is, Linda. I don't, I don't know.
I don't think Jay Hutchins is in agreement with everything else on paper from the engineer, and question some things, and pulled by the engineers. That's exactly what we want.
Quite, quite honestly, it's a state project that lets the oversight handle it, as is, it should be. But if the state is doing their job, I guess, uh, I don't know.
Point of information, did the town ask for this? Did the state just wake up one morning and say, Bakersfield needs this for a renewal project?
The town did not ask for this.
So the state is on this here.
As, as per their regular, irregular maintenance program for all state roads.
I do understand that this is a plan to do this kind of curbing and everything in other small villages as an effort to slow down the traffic.
We'll see how it works.
Well, how's that gonna, I don't see that working.
Chusing traffic can just slow them down on a sled though.
So like, all those spots, though, we're gonna have to mow in the summertime?
I don't know what they're gonna put in those spots.
Well, they told me to put flowers there, because I said, you know, if you put a curbing there, I'll be able to get my mower up the, the mower up. Who put flowers there?
I'm on my own. I'm on in front of the town park. It's not that bad.
We don't have one of those little islands, like, yeah. Oh, you do?
I mean, I, I'm on my property coming down onto it.
Oh.
But there's a three or four foot strip of grass there that I'm on.
You have to be happy to put all flowers there.
Yeah, but we're gonna own what's in front of the library, the town is.
We don't own it, we're just responsible. This is within the state right away, Terry, so we'll never own it. We're just responsible for maintaining, because it's an ass.
That's what I'm saying, though. There's no house there to maintain it.
Well, it's our responsibility to maintain and keep sidewalks clear. Uh, the curbing, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Lawn mower.
We don't need a lawnmower.
We have a lawnmower?
We got a lawnmower, and people own their own.
Perfect.
Nobody in the library, there's no lawn there. It's a strictly sidewalk. I mow the little pit, little biddle there where the signs are.
Yeah, we got a, uh, little apron mower, goes under that.
Right away, as they gave, they gave everything supposedly.
Who does?
I do. I mow that every week, thank you, Linda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw Danny fly over here.
On a very rare occasion, he does, but we're trying to go to the things done, so I just, I'll, I'll play and I play.
The conservation.
Hey, do you feel that it is our responsibility to involve the state at this point?
Yes.
I think we need to have a recent sweep on record, yes.
One thing I'd like to correct you on, the state has easement. They don't own the land the owners on.
Yeah, you are correct. Yeah, that was a mistake, Linda.
Yeah, just, just to be sure.
Yeah.
Which is probably why some of what they're saying is, we have an easement, but you're responsible for the share of the land.
So for several years, I've paid for something, but now, all of a sudden, they want the town to get care of that.
Well, they've been, so, last couple of years anyway, the sidewalk part.
The sidewalk, yes, there.
How long's that sidewalk been in there now?
Which one?
The original one, I'm sorry.
The one in front of Linda's or the one on this side? Well, one from Linda's is quite old. The one on this side is.
The one on, the one on the left, your side.
I'm not sure how long it's been, quite a while.
Yeah. And the other one?
Over in front of mine?
Forever?
For nineteen fifty-five, I don't know. But that's what we need to go into.
I, I've just, yeah, nineteen fifty-five is before I was born, so.
There you go.
So BL.
And I can remember, as a kid, the, the, the sidewalk going down the, uh, uh, east side of the road. There were stretches that were still on the west side of the road too. Short stretches.
On the west, it went on down through the old, uh, Masonic Hall, where the lumbermen moved to.
Yeah.
Went down through into there, uh, dumped down into the lot, uh, Elsie McCree Garage, down there.
Yeah.
And, uh, there was nothing.
So historically, they're looking at, there was a sidewalk here, and, and apparently there.
The sidewalk, the issue with all this curbing that they added. I think the sidewalk is great, but I wish they'd gone all the way to the corner down here.
What, what, what's the logic behind the curbing for the engineer's standpoint?
I, uh, all I can think is it makes a very clear line of demarcation, and it keeps the runoff.
Containment.
Containment. That's, that's my understanding. And it rattles plow trucks as it goes through.
Way, way higher than that, yeah.
The party driver is, he's trying to make it home at two in the morning. It's about a couple of cars, or a ax house that found that little jut out in the curbing. It's fun, it's a flat, it's. That's all, anyway.
Um.
But why so high? I don't know. Uh, if it gets too damn high, just try opening your car door on, on the off traveling side, uh, it, when you park. I mean, if you drive a truck, and, and hell, you could, you could park it, park it next to a beetle and still avoid not hit it, but for those of us that have cars, uh, a, a curbing that sticks up like this, uh.
Well, they've got another four inches of bike cap.
It's still in it. Cars, doors.
Still gonna?
Still gonna.
Oh, wow.
Happens now.
It's likely a seven inch reveal when they, or a seven inch reveal when they're done.
Yeah.
How well does your mower crunch up, Grant? How well does your mower crunch up, Grant? Okay, so. Matt, can you approach?
And I'll go with you if you want. Uh, the, the state engineer in the offices down here? And tell him that, uh, we have some concerns, and, and just, just let me know, I'll go with you. Uh, you're already familiar with the people, that's why I'm asking you. I'm not just picking on you. Uh, you're familiar with people from Jay Hutchins, and you've had some dealings with the state people as well.
Not so much with the state, but they're, I think they're pretty easy to get along with.
Of course.
Communication.
Okay.
Initial. Not sure about talking to a post, but they very well could be.
Do we want to at our next meeting, or do we want them do a different meeting before then?
Well, the curbing is, I mean, to modify it at this point is.
They did come and pick up the high curbing and put in low curbing for eighty-eight.
On your house, yeah, I did see that. Uh, I mean, by in, I mean, it's concreted in on both sides. I, I, I would like to express our concerns and invite them to a meeting. When do you, the next one or the one after? What do you think?
I'd say the next one.
Later, because.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not gonna take them that much longer, I don't think they'll finish it once.
So we got two weeks to get in contact and invite them to a meeting. Is that reasonable?
Okay. The state has a representative on site every day. There's a D-tran guy there, so I don't know how many engineers.
Yeah.
There's always the one guy with a, a hard hat, says the, the D-tran right on it.
Yeah, they've been there right along.
Is he the engineer of record for this project?
Probably not. I, I will say, probably not. Could be one of his minions.
He seems to have two, what? One might not work.
Okay. Anything further? Where? I, I just had wished that at least at that last meeting, there had been more people here.
Hang on, I'm gonna prove that any of those sound.
Well, this, I mean, the last meeting, I say that, but it was probably three years ago. Their, their last informational meetings.
I did, I did go to at least one and I.
Yeah, I remember either.
I remember specials. It was concerned then and that was earlier in planning. To try to address them before it became hard on deeper, but they back.
Well, this has been being discussed for at least a decade, this project. It's been put off and rolled back and all. We don't have funding for it this year and.
We're not gonna fix your road because we're gonna tear it up next year. Or, or five years.
Yeah. Yeah. You, you know, the old routine. All, thank you very much for coming and sometimes we need to get slapped upside the head. Make sure we're paying attention.
I think Alan has a different issue though.
He does.
Yes, each Bakerfield, we're looking, we're looking at a lot of, and I've had concerns about this for quite a while. Couple of more meetings. I wanna say that the paving that they done East Bakerfield, new section. It's for the coal hall. Done kind of half ass like, you know, real, I don't think he did it any thinner. But you know, it, it took a couple of years to break up and yet right now it's nothing but a bunch of potholes. And right down to the dirt. So it doesn't do any good to try to pound into this stuff that Hutchins give it to. I think it should be paved. Not the whole thing obviously, you know, but at least where it started to break up. pave it over, you know, and maybe go a little further.
Okay, so.
You know, once, once, once a road has been improved, you don't, you don't knock it back to the gravel. That's just what, what's been going on for, for a lot of years now.
In your opinion, what was the original problem with the project?
What project we're talking about?
Paving East Bakerfield Room. And I'm gonna say one word, substance. I'm gonna say one word, substance. Putting, putting another two, three inches on the top of it isn't going to improve. It's just gonna be a waste of money.
Well, okay.
In my opinion.
Why don't we do it?
Corrected, you mean?
I've heard comments at different, different meetings that, well, we're just for the, why don't we tear it back to brown? Well, that's not, that's not.
How should we do it? Blacktop over top it with a sub basis no good? If you're gonna put a sub base in it.
Why, 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 why was it done that way? It just wasn't.
They weren't supposed to go that far. They had that much blacktop and they went a little further. They were supposed to go just as far as Todd's driveway. Which is not gonna take care of the whole problem, but that's where it was. We had done some drainage job there, thought it was done with.
Well, that's just way throwing money out of that. Well, why don't, why not do it, right?
We don't have the money in the budget?
Not at present. And, and I will back Matt up 100% on that. At present, we don't have the money. We can fund this for later, but we're not gonna do it this year. We still haven't got.
We do have paving money.
We do. We do, we have the paving money. We don't have the money to rip the road up and do the sub base over.
Let's back up a little bit. We won't go to the, where the potholes are. But you know, you got, we come back this way toward the town and you've got potholes there and that's, that's the old thing. That can be done, but at least, you know, put a, swing it up. Don't just just pound a, you know, a little bit of blacktop into a hole that's packed with coal. It's not gonna happen.
It should be dug up. We need a new sub base there.
He's talking the, where Mac was saying from, are you talking from like Dan Gaffney's two tots?
Just before, before you go up to Phil Donnie's driveway. That is terrible right now. And that's been terrible now for months. And the boys, they, they do what they can do. You know, they, they take, they take some of this gravel to get out of the sand there. And they throw it in there. First rainstorm, it's gone. I don't know. What can you do with it? Now, now they're gonna throw, they're gonna blacktop. I don't know how many blacktop they're gonna do for Boston Post Road. The only part that, that I see that need to be done is, is by the Witch Cat Road and toward the town line. The rest of it is passable. So, you know, how much, why don't we take some of the money that they wanna throw from the Boston Post Road and put on each acre?
Because when you're giving grants, you can't skip from one place to another. You gotta do one spot, continuous pace. That's it. They will not let you move.
How are they doing for the Boston Post Road? How much are they gonna want it?
We did not get a grant for that. It would, it would be one mile usually, little over a mile is what the grants usually go for. And they still have a matching fund. That's the money that's in the fund for paving.
What, what, what says, when we have a 80% of this year, $10,000, what says it has to go to Boston Post Road?
Nothing. The last time they got paid was before the Porsche. Because that finally got turned into a class two road. It was a class three before that. And you can't, those kind of grants can't go on class three. It has to go on class two. So until it got upgraded, it wasn't eligible for paving.
You're saying often for the East Baker Road not eligible?
It is now. They got it upgraded class two. That road there in the post road is more important. I mean, as far as those ruts down towards the Easburg Line. So what I'm saying is, start that project right there and go up as far, even if you only go as far as Jarvis. That's your plan paving grant for, who knows, two, three years. Only have it so many.
Yeah, I understand. There was a, the state pays for 80% of it or something. I think it's something that type.
So you can only do one project a year?
How much money do we have in the case for the?
$40,000.
We have, yeah, 40 for the paving.
Which if you do a mile of blacktop is about what the town would owe for their matching grant. That's why we keep asking for it. And then if we put it over there, yes, that would be nice, but then we have nothing for matching grant. And if we get a grant next year, you're gonna have to come up with 40 or whatever it is percentage.
So you applied for a grant and didn't get it?
Right. Last year they didn't do any because of COVID. This year they took the grants that were accepted for last year, from what I understand, and gave them to this year's people. Okay, so they just kind of pushed the last years because last year the towns all got an extra state aid check or something for.
Do you expect that we would be?
I think we should be toward the top right now, yeah.
Another year?
Yeah, I would say. But again, do I go over here? Do I go up there? I'm not rotten by the Jarvis Gardens. Getting pretty severe.
I agree.
Well, yeah, we haven't done much better either.
Yeah, we was not eligible. That's not a class two road. Towns on their own with a little feeling money from years back. They, they skimmed up in the top bit and went to the corner.
On the paving grants, can it be used for a substructure or a base?
We can, we can.
Our, our problem in Bakersfield, our problem in Vermont, and I can talk to this a little bit technically. Is the fact that we have a lot of different subs soils in our roads with high gradings and moisture. And that sets up for differential heaving that creates some things we see problems as. And the only way we can do it is to drain down the, the, the sub, the subsoil and moisture pressure. And make it as homogeneous as we can. So that it all beefs and settles together. Without that, we're, we're out again. I've quoted several times a, a good technical paper from Prall.
I know.
You gave it, yes. And, and that kind of explains things in a little more layman's terms. But unless we address the fundamental issue of what's going on under the blacktop. Just putting stuff on top is, is.
Trivial anyway.
Right, right. It's polished. It looks good for the summer. It might leak it through the spring, but we quickly, we get spots that are, blacktop is reasonably healthy and then we have critters. Just look, we have or, or short, take it short. They're not getting filled yet.
If we took. Somebody and rented a rolling compactor and took.
Yeah, we wouldn't temporarily address it until we could get it, okay? The, the issue is that because you have different types of soils, they have affinity for, for the water at the ice soil interface. Then that feeds it. That's why proceeds goes so high. That's why you can take a walk in the late fall woods and you'll see a clump of dirt sitting up all about that high. Off it with ice under it. It's dendritic growth and that's the way it is. Compacting is not the issue. You've got to get it homogeneous and you've got to get the moisture out. Now the moisture has been measured and is pretty reasonable. It's been known to pull at eight feet. You have your, you have your water gradient down. It's been known to pull it up that high if it gets a connection through. And then the reason why we see selection in the spring is we, we have those free sauce items where if it froze and stayed frozen, it wouldn't. But because it frees sauce, it keeps pumping that water in there. We get the heat. And that's why in the spring is, it is such an issue. And, and that's why we're, they put a covert in and they're put grabbing, they're packed the hell out of it and do all kinds of things. That covert didn't heat, but the rest of the road did. And that's why you got the down dips. So it's, it's not a trivial problem. It's not an inexpensive problem. They tried to address those issues on one way south and when they dug down so deep, there were layers of cement and dirt. They're trying to make something a little more homogeneous and go less reacting on by the moisture. But sort of, okay. I mean, it's way better than it was. Our roads, they, when they built those roads, they just pulled in what they put off the sides, stone walls, whatever. Still trees and tree stumps and things like that. And that's, we live with what we got there. And I remember what, just a few years ago, you guys pulled the stump out of the middle of the hill. And, and that road from the top into the basket of Hill Region was the first road in town. So this is, this is what you get. So it's, it's not trivial. But if you're gonna do it, maybe, maybe you ought to just do that section and pave that section. That's how you gotta give it up to make it happen. I've seen, just put the paving down. It's great for a little while.
Good, well, it was, it was just good for a little while.
Could we put something in the, the budget? Well, that has to be, has to be voted on at town meeting. So why don't we could put a separate item for the East Bakers, you know, for, for the voters to, to vote on?
I would suggest get petition, get forward to the, get it signed. Give it to the slide board and that gives us no choice.
That's a good idea. Get petition going for these, you know, you, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of people who are going to East Bakers for, whether they live or travel. You know, it's just. The, the boys did a good job ditching, you know, that. Last couple of years, that's been, been pretty darn good as far as, you know, the gravel part of it. I will call it gravel. We'll get it to, we'll put a slack, you know, but anyway, that has been good.
That was a little bit of slap, slay, yes. Tens of thousands of dollars in the speed of the storm.
We, those potholes that are there, they've been there now for a couple of months and, you know, nothing's been done. We've, we've got to at least make it after it. Not just so dirty. You know, that's, that's no.
That's why we're gonna try to reclaim, use that with more, so.
Yeah. Hopefully that'll get it. But you've got, got a lot of, a lot of burns. I, I call them burns, like parades on this lawn. They'll run that, that sticks right out into the road and stops out. People have a swerve to miss it. Now, let's, let's push that stuff, you know, to the side a little bit where it's long, not middle of the road.
What I think.
You take it, well, it's kind of like a burn.
It's past, it's past the length of a whole board and they, the dirt pile, as I go by with the whole board. Greater. It, it's just not a reach.
I think what you're talking about on the blacktop, I think it would be that.
Yeah, also stone blacktop.
We reclaimed blacktop. We tried it before. The sculpash, we tried it before. The stone we put in there, the ground we put in there, the stone tummy we put in there. It just, once it gets beat up, it just works its way to the side of the road. I mean, a lot of it could be pulled back in, but if there's no find to pack it down, that's why we were thinking about putting the other stuff in there.
And if we can't pave it this year, you might have to accept the fact that we're gonna have to use a stopgap measure. We'll put in what we can and smooth it out as best we can.
Let's, let's use rubber foam up. Get over here. Now, at least get stone, you know, crushed stone or like that reclaimed blacktop and that, give that.
Something like a sure pack.
Yeah.
I think that'll be better than a sure pack. Cause a sure pack, once it gets wet, I mean, it's the same thing.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
I, but I think that stuff, we tried it on, where did we try it? In front of Rosalie's camp there and it's, it held pretty good for a couple of years. This year didn't, you know, it, it heat began with a mud.
As much as I said, we do not have the funding to take care of that in the correct way in a short term. We'll do the best we can. The situation will be addressed, but it will not be a permanent cure.
That is a good idea to put it in the budget, you know, get the thing together for next year. You have enough people to live out there.
They didn't throw money to the charitable society or be fair. Throw money to the library.
No, 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 no. That wasn't town money. That was trustee funds. That, those funds can't be spent on roads. I'm sorry.
No, 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 but we put money in those funds, tax dollars in those funds.
I, I, I thought he was talking, I thought you were talking about the loan we discussed.
We gave, we gave money to the charitable side.
Yes, we did.
The charitable? I apologize. Any more comments, Jerry?
Yes. When was the last time the state hasn't ever been done, an actual traffic study of the coal hall, traffic that heads that way out of town? The number of cars, where do they go? What times a day do you have this travel?
To my knowledge, I don't think it's ever been done.
There's also, there's actually kind of a counter there. What, a couple of years ago, they did it just before they made it class two road. They had, they have the.
What was that?
A couple of years back, maybe three years.
He's trying to say what he wants to.
They've had them over as far as Terry Malone's, the, the strip there across the council.
Do they share it with us? Because that's, that's the argument to the state. You get so many, so many axle passes a day. 200 cars a day and then now you're starting to say, in a normal society, we would consider paving that because the cost of maintenance. Paving it is less than the cost of maintenance for gravel. Those things are there. I, I don't know traffic. If you're still alive and kicking, Joe often, Inder, used to do that at UVM. Quite approved. And there, there's a science to it to determine what's, what's the best way. And if we don't have that data, it's, it's opinions. We don't have, but if we can put facts together down on paper and say, we have the equivalent of 500 vehicles going east and 500 northwest every day. And on the weekends it's such and such and on the evenings it's such and such. Then we start to have some facts that we can start talking with them and saying, hey, look, you know, according to your criteria, state engineer, this ought to be made. The town can't afford it. Pulling up some of that money. Pull me up some of that money. Otherwise, we're just, we're just talking to ourselves really. Uh or talking to a hole.
The plan of the, whatever that stuff's called again.
What's that? The reclaim?
Reclaim. So the plan is to do the reclaim. This summer?
Yeah.
Does that go in?
Yeah, it's it's basically, I've been told and what I've seen a little bit of it, it's similar to using coal patch, but I mean, it was free to us, so.
Do you have to heat it with that thing? No?
No, this is what they took off of one way up here, some of it, they gave us a few loads, seven, eight loads and.
The people are straight, you know, um because I know when I'm getting this one from my place on the eight road, I go right on a. A left hand side, because I'm not. Not going to go through that pothole.
There's, there's some big ones there.
Yeah, there's a good one there.
So states in the past, ask your guy. That you deal with, if you can survive that data. You know. It might help us make it harder.
Yeah.
At least understand, because I don't know how many cars go live, I know up at the.
Kids who do, college kids sit on the corner?
Yep, yep, that's exactly what they, they're 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 that and they're counting which cars go what way, and what. They didn't order change before we lose some cars.
Doesn't matter, traffic's traffic.
Okay, it doesn't. They're they're typically. Civil engineering students. That's what they do, and Joe used to do a shitload of that. For not clear this. Data, and we determine what needed to happen at certain intersections. What happens, you know, do you need a light in an intersection, what's going on, where's your traffic? Well, they have the counters and they have the.
Kathy?
No. I saw from Porsha sitting there one day, I saw her out here, uh Bethany. They did some. I don't know if she did anything, when they were talking about reducing the speed limit. They were, she was gonna do some studies on that kind of stuff in the in the village limits.
Yeah, yeah.
It's still good, it's hotter outside than here.
Put the stick in it. Well, the thing is, we freeze them here in the winter time, now, die in the heat in the summer.
So I know you, not all of you get the answers you wanted, but uh that's what we're gonna attempt to do and we will proceed.
Yep, I gotta call you. Nothing helps that way, you can send it to town for town meeting and say, it's not just Allen that wants this done, it's everybody and this is how many is on there or were on there. That was, like I say, that was a few years back, but and there's probably more sap trucks and stuff like that.
How far is it paved to, all the way to Wichita or no?
No, just to fill down the.
It's not very bad.
Just past Todd and Perry's.
Oh, oh. Okay.
They did the lawyer road actually about five years ago, and a counter across.
They, every once in a while, they throw counters up in weird places, I don't know why. I don't know, still want a few years ago on the Baker field was because of the replacement of the bridge, they were trying to figure out what the impact was gonna be by closing the bridge and. How many cars, but that's still closed, so.
You know, all right, so they should be talking to you guys when they go and do that, because you were responsible for those roads.
Right.
You know, they may be looking at it, they should be talking to you about it.
Thank you. Good evening and uh we'll uh try and address your issues.
See ya.
We're going to see if we can invite. A state representative for the project on one oh eight. Uh whether it will be the engineer of record or not, uh is to be determined by who they send with. We'll attempt to get the engineer record. Either Mac or, yeah.
Or if they'll even let us. Or if they'll even entertain talking to us, I mean, I'm sure they will.
It's a strong possibility they won't even acknowledge us, honestly.
That's the only problem with state, they've got their rules and regulations.
Yeah. Okay, road report.
This didn't get completed on the weekend. He hated ditch, he put fine gravel on the top. Lance got a complaint that there was no signs up, but the signs had fallen over on this end of the road and.
Actually, Terry got it.
And they did everything they were supposed to, from what we could see.
August ninth. That that passed you, what year ago, tomorrow.
Really, it's been a year already? Oh, that's crazy. So on this permit, do we? I mean, that's the first one I've ever been involved in, but um it seems like the weekend was not a smart time to do it. And somebody told me that you're not supposed to be able to close a road on the weekend.
I don't think it makes any difference, the law didn't inform the authorities, he did call A and O service and tell them, you have to close till noon.
He did his due diligence.
I think it was just on account of that's when you could do it, you know.
And nobody on the road was informed.
You go to door to door, that'd be one thing, but. I mean, most people, they're coming out of the road, they're gonna see it, not very many, you know, people on that end, they're going to be what, Walker's old place. Not, those people don't come there this way, that way, the people from this.
That's what I was trying to figure out, could you not, everybody could get out, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's just a matter of, like Jody and. One, there was three or four very close houses that basically could see what he was doing and then, like, when you got towards Aurora. Those people don't go out, I don't wanna say they don't go out much, but. I don't think they come this way, most of the people go this way, except for the people on that, like from Aurora, probably down through, would go that way to the shorter. So, you know, and most of them probably could see what they were doing, because he had his truck parked in the road, he had the excavator in the road for a while.
Well, the complaint I had was, they got there and there was nothing there.
There was a truck there when we got there, he said he'd been standing there all morning, there were three of them, Gavin, Ryan.
Yeah.
The other guy, I can't think of who.
And I was like. I didn't know he was doing it on a Saturday, I was like, well, he did, I did tell him, I said.
The excavator was probably down, doing the other end off the west side of the road.
And he asked, he asked, the day we got the game from the permit, he said it would probably be a Saturday.
Hmm.
He did say that.
He did.
No, no, this is for the power line. Yeah. Whatever, the people, I think it's those new people that are building right there, Ledzy Martin.
Put the two, I would say three conduits in, he put a. Ribbon for marking the area in. Like I said, he did put fine gravel, fine crushed gravel on top. Over today, it was very smooth, and he paved down the. Ditch on the in the downtown anyway, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I was thinking maybe next time it should be done during the week, where we could actually. Make sure that they are set up correctly.
Oh, like I said, Lance and I went up and.
If I'd have known he was doing it then, and somebody had asked me to go up and make sure everything's all right, I would have done it, it's just a matter of reforming this. It wouldn't have made any difference if it was the week or weekend.
He he talked to Dan Friday, Dan gave him the signs, you know, the road closed signs, and that's what we offered, asked him to do, put the signs up on the end. You know, he did, like I said, he did everything, I mean, weekday, weekend, I don't know if it would have made any difference.
Probably not.
Especially then when you start running.
Well, I meant for, because you guys wouldn't want to go on Saturday and do it, but Lance says he will.
Well, I went with him, that's no problem.
So you did go with him? Well, I was hitting your pager and I was like, and then it dawned on me, I'm like, oh wait, he's not gonna have his pager. And I was at work, I had nothing to be able to find anyone's phone numbers, buy a new Lance's number and I was like.
No problem, Lance came over to the house, asked me if I'd talk to the guy, and I said, no, and he said there was no signs and. And then I went up that, he was driving, I went up that road book down, there it is, blown, either blown over or somebody kicked it over into the ditch. And I'm thinking, going up that blacktop, it probably got kicked rather than blown, because. You know, it's a good sized stand, the full, you know, he said it was a broken sign, but when we looked at it.
Didn't look broken.
It didn't look broken, so I'm thinking somebody would got mad at the fact that they had to turn around and kick it, so.
That could be.
They did get put back out, so, and but then again, they were also basically done when. Instead of that, built over there.
Yeah.
Other than that, we got, Lance was saying earlier, FEMA. And the state have, you've answered all the questions from the state, and Josh signed a paper Wednesday. I believe it was.
Wednesday, Thursday.
They wanted the head select board member to sign it. Uh one was a. Form that had to fill out once during the event and then there's another one for the monies every time we get reimbursed. And this one was for ninety six thousand two hundred and forty eight, it hasn't been deposited yet, but it's, it very well could be there now. Because.
It is not.
It's not.
How much?
Uh ninety six thousand.
Ninety six plus minutes.
Ninety six thousand two hundred and eighty four dollars or something like that.
Some such.
Eight cents.
Yeah.
I can get you the number, I don't. But that's, that's uh. That's a good thing there.
Now, that that money will be deposited into a road account and from the road account. Uh we will. Have a warrant written. For the select board to authorize payment from the road account to the FEMA loan. So it, I didn't realize it at first, but it has to go through a town account before, can't just take the.
On that paper they sent, they sent a check, they said a check will be sent, but I don't think.
It's automatic deposit.
That's what I thought, but on that paper, it did say check, but.
It did.
And other than that, Jordan Road, they went down, put the color in, Lance and I went down and inspected that one again, and our engineer was there twice and that looks good. That we would be expecting a bill, I would assume, from that. Thought it might be here this week, but.
So ho- hopefully next, our next meeting, we'll be able to take a big chunk out of our being alone.
Yeah, plus all the paperwork has been submitted to. Somebody at FEMA, besides who, all the paperwork Lance and I have been doing, has gotten submitted for approval or reimbursement or whatever, so.
Yeah.
That's an improvement and we came up with.
It's in the last stage, has a hundred and forty.
Two thousand maybe?
Two, yeah, I think it was a hundred and forty two thousand dollars, of which seventy five percent of that is.
FEMA.
FEMA, um.
How is the?
Twelve and a half percent from the state.
Won by Rodney Allen, what's the? Go path.
Apparently they're, they've got things ordered, and he's expecting that to be started either late this month or first of September. The footings and stuff, not sure that will be completed this year, but like you said, depends upon the weather in the fall.
These are.
It's like last year, they were working there till December, so. If you can get the piece parts together with after you get the footings in. It was here, but it's definitely, they've got extensions on that one.
Yeah, it's part of the. Engineering.
Saying I'm doing it, they got it started this year, they they wanna get it down there.
How's the mowing going? It's all done?
Yeah. It doesn't have to be.
Oh, really? We had these two tables covered from one end to the other with paper. Yeah. Every once in a while, just to make things more confusing, somebody can come over and drop something else.
Do it twice a year at the mowing?
So I mean, it's a matter, we can always put it back on, you own the thing, and do a second cut sometime if 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 need arises.
Or if.
Intersectional visibility might be.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I know, I know this dam was taken back, you know, he wouldn't just make one cut, he. Yeah. Yeah. Because intersections are the worst. Worst spots we have.
I know, but there's some seeders that should come down.
Yeah, tell me about it, I know there's two sets of seeders that should come in. But I'm not gonna say.
The wheel?
Well, they're in the town. Technically own the seeders now.
That's in the town right away?
Yep.
Point being. You can't take them down.
But we probably could.
Wait, no, one of the boys tried one.
Greater wing is just quite hard enough to get them down. It does knock off a lot of branches, though. Little surprised the deer haven't munched on that one, they, I've done a quite a job on. The Joy Road over where we used to live, they have a little seeders there and they're trimmed up eight feet tall, I mean, just right to the, right to the center of Trump. I have, most oil plow over there, and they'll be standing on our feet, eating off the tops, and they like that stuff.
Must be.
They've got it trimmed out very nice over there, we just got a few over on the other road.
Uh mail, we just reviewed that, that was the only mail that I saw was resignation.
What's this here though?
Signed that, what's that?
Is that in the warrants? Or is that?
Yeah, for the Shattuck Mountain Trail. It's one of the.
Land, they've been doing it.
Right, right.
So Lance has been paying for this one of those, which needs to be reimbursed to him.
So do we?
Yeah, but the grant is being held. By the town.
Right.
So we we, it doesn't. It was never budgeted, we never came up with the money, somebody else gave the money, they had to have somebody who was willing to hold the money.
No, I know, but who decides that he can be reimbursed, us or the conservation committee?
As long as he can come up with proof that it is on that project. Sticks and stuff, he's got a letter here. Says that it is for that project, trails on Shattuck Mountain, sign trail improvement, mapping, et cetera.
So they don't, the, like, somebody from the committee, I would think, would have to sign that off to be put to us.
I would.
For us to to pay.
Is that being held in in the general fund? Me neither.
I mean, it must be. I have no idea.
I mean, I don't have a problem reimbursing the person, I just have a problem with us not knowing what can and can't be reimbursed out of that. I mean, we don't have any. Regs as far as how that all works. I don't want to just be dishing out money and then. I don't want to just be dishing out money and then finding out afterwards, well, we didn't say we'd pay that, why'd you pay that?
I believe so.
That's what I would say.
It'd be.
What strictures is.
Larry. Yeah, Larry Creedy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Advisor will say, hey, we've got, and copy him on that and say, here's what we got.
Yeah, we should get Larry to sign off.
Is this legitimate? Yeah. But it's, it's paid for, I mean, it's already, the money's there.
Yeah.
It's a matter of accounting for it and who.
I would say those.
Legitimizes the.
Definitely have to be approved by one of those team members before we just go writing a check out of that account.
Fair enough.
Did you call Larry?
Yep, please. Tell him I'll meet with him if he wants to meet with one of us or he can come up and just sign off on it.
Go hike the trail, see what you can.
What'd you say?
He said, go hike the trail.
Go ride the trail.
Sure.
See what worked out though.
Soon as I get my hip replaced, I'll go hike the trail.
I wonder if this is at Seth's place.
There's no dates yet.
This is over to Seth?
Yeah.
Is that why you're moving?
Huh?
Is that why you're moving?
Yeah. Yeah.
Seth coached him in baseball. Love this kid. His land?
Seth, you don't want.
It is so weird when that happens. I just interviewed a kid that played hockey with Seth and I had the hardest time interviewing him because. It's like, I just can't picture as an adult, like. It was so together and.
He looks good. I saw him over at Ryan's.
Oh Seth, I mean land. Oh Seth, yeah, he's all beard too.
He looks, he looks good. He's grown up.
It's all in Sugar Woods.
He finally grew up.
Finally. That's what a good woman does for you.
You know how hard it is for you not to say anything like that. All right, I'm sorry.
All right, what's this here? Is this us too?
Where'd you get this stuff?
It was all here.
Select board handbook. This is the contract. Was that in the new mail or did?
No, it was laying right here. It wasn't here, it was laying right here. This is Audrey, receive the FEMA, probably you already know about this.
Well, I'd like to wait until, before we sign this, I'd like to wait until we have a full board. It's a fire protection contract.
Maybe this was supposed to be Audrey's.
Yeah, it's a lot of money. I want to wait until.
No, I agree. This might, maybe this was Audrey's stuff that she forgot.
Could be, no, well, it could be.
She might just want to put it on her desk.
It's stuck in pride and Terry never forgot it.
That could happen.
Okay, the American Rescue Plan Act. Update.
Couple of things have happened, which is good. We have received sixty-nine thousand five hundred twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents apparently. Six nine five twelve point six seven. And that came along with this letter advising us not to start a separate bank account. So not to start a separate bank account, but for put it in as a interest-bearing account someplace. We gotta go through.
Whoa, 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 this is one of those accounts, this is one of those deals where they expect us to give them the interest.
Nope, we get to keep it. Yeah, that's actually in the first.
Yeah, that's unlike the FEMA stuff. They expect us if we, yeah.
You are able to retain any interest earned on these funds, so it's a bit different. Couple of things that I will be doing now that there is funding, so that I can go ahead and, and work the time. Is I'm going to be working with the VLCT to provide guidance for all of us with respect to. Community involvement and informational meetings. Clearly know what we can and can't do with these funds. By the way, this is, this is about half of what we're expecting. Tomorrow, I'm gonna go up to the bank and say, how do you want to deal with this? Because we're not gonna be the only municipality up there that's doing the same thing. And whether it's gonna be a journal entry in a line item like FEMA funds coming in, which is what I would expect, but I don't know.
So they're not really telling us not to put it in a separate account, they're just saying we want it in an account that's interest-bearing. It can be still separate from other town accounts.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, we're not starting a whole bank account up just for that. One thing I'm gonna do to commit to doing the work is create a journal or diary entry of every day that I work or, and what specifically that I do. So then the event that I have to hand it to somebody, they will be able to track dates and times of what I did, like going to the bank tomorrow, like going online.
That's what I did for FEMA stuff.
VLCT, so that'll be a binder that'll, I'll take it home, but I'll bring it here weekly so that we can review it. As far as what I'm up to, get questions about it. Rather than go around me, go through me to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, so I can ask the question, I can get the information and I can have that in my head. I want to know what you don't know and I want to be able to tell you what they found out or told me, so if I can.
So right now, we've received that amount of money.
Yep, we got money.
But you're not sure what we can do with it.
Well, that's part of the, the education process is to see what we can, we know that it has strictures on it, we know that there are things we can use it for. We know that there are things that they can't use it for. And basically, anything we don't use, we'll go back to the fund to, to put it towards other towns that may have more need than we do. So it's in our best interest to figure out how to use everything.
Right.
On this and find out ways to do it, so.
So that's what you're going with the LCT is to have a conversation with them.
There's actually, yeah, there's two, there's two places that we can go. One is NEMRC Fund Accounting, which is the, we're a client of them. And they are, they are responsible for moving the funds from the state to our accounts. They keep track of that and they also have, if you have any questions, call them. And I think the League of Cities and Towns already had a great start with the course we all took, right? The, the part that we took, the hour that we spent online looking at that, so they have, they have this figured out. And we'll keep everything and everybody legal. And then as soon as we, as soon as I get that information, probably by the end of the week. I want to schedule a information meetings that we record and that are available for people back on the web. So that they can go and refer to them if they want. And we may do these, depending on what they advise, two or three times between now and any expenditure. I don't know if it requires anything other than input from the town. I don't know if we have to go to town meeting, I'm gonna ask all these questions, we have to wait to town meeting to appropriate these. We have to petition, we have to have a very formal process or informal process for this.
Because the town's in on the decision as to what we do with it, right?
Yeah, we, we don't really want to have any guidance from the board, we want this to come from the town.
Right.
The town needs to know what they can and can't do with it.
Give, once we find out what we can do with it. Would we give like five options for the town to look at to do with the money or?
We might just provide the list, if there's a list of things that they can do. And then by popular vote or opinion or, or whatever we decide we want to do. Let them say, hey, we've got X amount of money, if we do this, this and this, this will take up all the money. So there's a, there's probably a balance of, of education as well as. Information that has to go out so that folks feel comfortable.
Quite a long list of.
Well, it could be, it could be, but we may want to, we may, as a board, these are the board's priorities, this is what we, we select board recommends as priorities. But all these other things are possible as well, so.
Right.
I think for us to decide as a group, on maybe the top five and say, here's what we think that might work and fits with the plan.
Or what would benefit the town.
And what would benefit the town in the long run, but certainly we'll take input. I, when I hear the folks that sat there and said they didn't go to informational meetings, I worry that we don't get that word out to everybody. And even when the word is out and they say, well, I didn't know about it. I want it clustered everywhere, I want it plastered everywhere, I want full accountability, I want people to have a word, their word, what they want in there. You know, if it's, if it's something bizarre, it's planting trees over here and we can fund that, great.
Yeah, I agree.
Not a bad idea, actually.
Okay, so looking at that, so next meeting and what I would do, ten, is, is I would schedule. Me to report on the ARPA update every meeting, just make that part of. Yeah.
Your board was.
Yeah, okay, so that, that's, that's fine.
Every week.
Yep. So I should have much more to talk about next time, but I'll try to keep it concise. And I would start inviting the public to these meetings if you want to hear about ARPA under our meetings. Come help us, come help us spend the money.
Are, are you comfortable with it now? I know you were a little hesitant to start.
Yeah, I'm more, I'm more comfortable because I, I actually looked at budget stuff and I got an email tonight that I haven't even read through, but I want to have that in my head as well, so. They're communicating with me, it's two, gonna be a two-way street because I'll certainly fire back a note and say, got your email, got some questions, gonna call. So we're, we're on, we're on the path now to, to using these funds and I want to make sure that it's done fair and square and open and transparent. That's, that's about it from Lake Wobegon.
There you go. Terry, did you get any?
I have not gotten contact with Jason yet.
Okay.
He did not, he wasn't, I don't believe himself. I should see him Friday though because the golf tournament is actually starting, so he should be.
So I would prefer that we were all here for job description and road commissioner. So I can table that.
Yeah, it's fine.
Next meeting.
Yep.
Is there anything else anybody wants to discuss?
And you want to talk a little bit about the wonderful job you and Fox has done helping me get things set up. We're about ninety-nine percent on our own, on our own now with regards to doing this. I out of pocket gave him a twenty-five dollar gas card. I would like us as the boards to do something like that because he is an Essex Junction resident. He's also an expert on all this and he knows what we need to, to perfect it just a little bit more.
We, this, this is the person that we need to have finish this project. I'd gladly pay for his gas and lunch too. Point of order, I am an Essex town resident, thank you very much. I'm just gonna put, make this extremely clear, I am not from the Junction.
There you go.
Just to throw a little town politics, just in case you feel like you're getting all the excitement up here.
Thank you Lance, I, I think that he's provided valuable information. I will loop back with Roger because his person showed up without me asking. Lent technical assistance for about ten, fifteen minutes with us. Said you guys are good to go and, and left, so we, we have a stamp of approval from Northwest as well. I may be talking about storage for the Zoom meetings that we're doing. Depending on what we figure out tonight after we go to store this meeting in the system so that people can access it. We had a technical glitch last, last meeting, we were not able to reproduce the meeting online for people, but thank goodness we have great note-taking from our secretary. I hope so. I hope so. So we're, we may be, we may be unglitched and we may have a permanent solution to hanging this on the pole as well. And then just being able to plug and unplug it safely.
Does that have any Zoom capabilities?
It does not, but the, this solution right now is basically what parts are available during COVID insanity. So any, there's a, the major components of, of a laptop, which is very capable of doing all of this as well as the budget for the board. The screen, which is gonna, is durable and compatible of all kinds of technologies. I would say that out of everything, the camera and the microphones are the least critical components and are the most flexible. So the town could make the decision to either upgrade to a different kind of camera or to have an operator run it or switch up the microphones. You are probably going to need to establish a point of order about your audience to make sure they can actually heard.
Heard and seen. I, I think the perfect example was, no, he didn't want to come to the mic. We were able to pick him up, but we asked people who were listening and watching if they were able to hear person and.
They said no, so they can't, so unfortunately his comments weren't captured by the audio.
Right.
And so there's, but again, at the time, this is, these are the only parts available. In fact, the fact that she was able to get that camera is remarkable.
That's a pretty neat camera.
It's a great little camera. I think that you will likely need to do some filling with audio and/or find a local person, perhaps a young person. If you'd like to volunteer to be the microphone switching monkey.
We've been looking for that.
So what if, I know, I've seen other towns when they're on the meat. You know, they'll have something like, well, we got our camera on, but it'll be a mic and you have to come up to the mic, not.
There's a possibility that rearranging, we, you know, we wanted to get through to where we could physically have a meeting online with equipment that we bought.
Right.
I did not think about audience and other people coming in because we really haven't had a lot of people come in. But I think we need an audience seating area and perhaps a separate microphone pickup. I don't want them to be so intimidated they got to hold a microphone, there's a lot of people who won't do that. But if we have a microphone in an area and we just have to look at the logistics of this a little different. And I think we can come up with a, a great solution for people to be comfortable, knowing they're A, gonna be on camera. B, there's gonna be a transcript of it and C, they feel good about talking. Especially if we're gonna do public information meetings again with respect to the ARPA funds. It's gonna be important and we certainly want people to attend online and, and speak up about it, so having both of those venues available is important. The governor's guidance is that everybody can come back in and do meetings, but of course now we're spiking in Franklin County with the, with the new COVID variant as well. And so even within the context of us being in this non-air circulating room, could be bothersome for some people.
Do they make a camera that we could mount up on that exit sign that would catch eighty-five percent of the room?
Yeah, the problem is, is what we end up with is all, is it's either so wide angle that it keyholes, so everybody on the side. Look like they're Olympus and everybody in the middle looks like they're Twiggy.
I want to be in the middle.
No, you're, you're in the speech spot, you've got the chair of ours. The, the, the real, the real issue is. Yeah, you are, you have managed to hide from, behind the.
Hide in a freak spot.
So if they're gonna hide to the pole, like the, like back in the state, they're talking to the.
The pole is recording.
The real challenge isn't that now that, now that church and, and hardware is all available.
And has to sit out all the way out.
The problem is you need somebody fluent operator. And I don't think the, like the official Indian should do it. It's not something that I can do on an old braces. It's basically saying, hey, you know what, and you.
Like right now, that microphone is picking me up by ambient bouncing off that wall, now this microphone. Anybody thirty years and younger is going to instantly know all this stuff working, there's lots of people my age or older who would be more than comfortable with switching a button.
We may want to look at compensating somebody for that because we've not done well with volunteers. I know that Josh looked for kids that were doing projects that needed to have a civic component and they were all busy. We've got a new school year coming up, that may be a first request to the, to the supervisory union. I also know some people and principals and such in, in supervisory union that may be able to help us out and see what we can do. But I think always like, you know, offering, doing some compensation for driving his ass all the way out here. And listening to this wonderful board meeting is, is very worthy.
Who's not born up, right?
Yeah, I know, and he doesn't have other things to do, if I told you he was hard to get a hold of.
Well, really the thing is, is that. Well, really the thing is, is that Brenda can't leave this room until she's signed, until I get her on my board. So there's actually, there's a secret agenda here. Gender, yeah, Brenda's going to be on yet another board by the time she leaves this room, that's.
It's a quid pro quo.
Come on, it's a, it's a, it's a reminder business, please.
Yeah, it is, one might even start or star too.
I used to be involved with some death threats, but. Okay, so do we have anything else, anybody wants to discuss?
Motion to adjourn. You did?
We chose King Road Main Street, those are all the complaints I had this week. Oh, sorry. I thought that was him saying, I was scared.
Motion's been made in signing for adjournments, uh, tonight's meeting, all those in favor?
Talking.
Aye.
Aye.
We need you to say aye for a forum. Those opposed?